To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A quorum is present for City Council, Successor Agency, and Housing Authority members.
Thomas, are you ready to roll the video? For the last two years, a group of young men that are part of I B W Local Eleven Union Electricians in a program called Second Call, they're the reason we have Christmas lights on Market Street. Anthony Porter is now a gang interventionist and an Inglewood native. He's also a former gang member and has been incarcerated. Admin, ninety percent of the men here today had previously been incarcerated. The combined time that they served is approximately five hundred years in prison. But today, they stand here as free men, hardworking, productive citizens, and dedicated to our society and the community of Inglewood. So if we could roll the video, Thomas?
Second Call is a community-based organization that deals with individuals in the Los Angeles and surrounding communities who are disenfranchised and individuals who society disregard. In a nutshell, Second Call saves lives. We touch on things like low self-esteem, goal-setting, anger, anger management, angry behaviors, depression. Once we start the process of an individual realizing where he or she might have a stumbling block, we start the process of healing.
I just got out a hundred days ago. I did thirty-eight years and four months in prison. I went in when I was sixteen. I'm fifty-five, will be fifty-six in a minute. Within the last hundred days, I just hit the ground running.
Just recently, in the Second Call Impact Session, Gilbert was speaking about how he was taught to hate black people. And he said, by coming to Second Call, he realized that the things that he was taught were not correct.
What I was explaining here to the group was it's a type of spiritual healing in the sense that for thirty-eight years, blacks and Mexicans in prison, I was taught to hate one another. But since I've been out of prison for the last eight months, it's been nothing but black people that have helped me along my way in terms of getting into the union. Shamori Davis, Eric Brown, Big John Harrell. It's changed perception as well as eroded a lot of the prejudices that I had.
Anybody getting out of prison, first of all, they've got to have some kind of support system, or it's geared for failure. It's like jumping off a merry-go-round and trying to land on your feet. For somebody that's done, you know, twenty years, thirty years, the world has changed completely. It's like stepping out onto the moon.
Big John had turned around the lives of a lot of disadvantaged people, and one of the things that he was big on was recruiting for Local Eleven. He gives you the skills to be able to function on a job site.
Spirituality is actually a higher plane of thinking. You know what I mean? That's spirituality. So if you want to call it God, you call it whatever. We have been such takers for so long. Do you understand? Such takers. And until you become a giver, you don't have a chance.
Complacency is the ultimate goal killer. Complacency will kill growth.
We're talking about emotional situation, but John makes it humorous, and it makes it easier to talk about because we're going to talk about it, laugh about it. And if I keep talking and laughing about it, it no longer has power over me.
When I first got into the film industry, a guy named Eddie Bunker, he did about twenty-five years. One of the things he says is, Danny, you have to disarm people. Because people in prison, everything about people in prison, we have three mindsets. In prison, you have intimidate, manipulate, or fantasize. That's it. Nothing else. So I had to lose that. I literally had to say hi before anybody.
If I'm somewhere and I see somebody and I think it might be a little hairy, first thing will come out, hey, how you doing, my brother? To let you know that I'm not coming in harm. And to say it with a smile, hey, how you doing, my brother? You good? Are we good? Because then that way, it...
I've seen myself going through the same changes that Malcolm X did when I got to prison. And then I started opening up the doors. I started dealing with whites. I started dealing with Mexicans. I started seeing that we all in the same boat. You know, we all in the same boat. We all dealing with the same thing. We dealing with dysfunctional thinking. We dealing with depression. We dealing with anger. We dealing with some type of traumatic experience that happened early on in our lives.
Many of those people that come through organizations like Second Call, but particularly Second Call, are compassionate, sharp, and have understandings of our community that a lot of people don't get. And they are wonderful members of Local Eleven, and they are productive members and employees of our contractors. And that's why we try to empower and help Second Call.
Marvin Crofty is way ahead of the curve when it comes to diversity and inclusion. Individuals like myself who had checkered backgrounds have given us the opportunity to feed not only myself and my family and be an actual builder and learn some things is just short of phenomenal, and it's like a God saying. And so in the community, the I B W is respected.
Community and family support is absolutely essential. Without it, I think most people actually are probably doomed.
I know Gilbert didn't have a chance. I know that. I know. He went to the pen when he was sixteen years old, thirty-eight years. You can have all that perseverance, but if you don't have a place to put it, you're going to say, okay, well, what can I do to make some money? You know? So with this Second Call, it's like he's got an avenue. I'm so proud of that dude, man. I mean it.
The church that I attend as a member, Abundant Life Christian Church, was the catalyst for Second Call to start classes on Thursdays eight years ago, and it's just been a blessing ever since.
The people that are trying to help you, take their advice. Listen to them. They're not becoming rich helping you. They're doing it because they feel so good, man. You know, they feel so good.
I've seen Danny Trejo in movies. I don't know him personally, but the fact that he understands what we're doing at Second Call and some of the things that he's doing, I think is phenomenal.
I think the electrical union is unbelievable. You know what I mean? Everybody talks about it. I know guys that are in it. And no drugs, no alcohol, and good work ethics. Sky's the limit. You know, sky's the limit.
Okay, so could we have all the members of Second Call that are here meet over here by the city seal so we could give you certificates?
So real quick, I want to say thank you to the mayor and the city council for allowing us to make a difference in the city of Inglewood with giving an opportunity for these young men and women to do something real special, more importantly, save their lives. And we doing it through the life skills to where as when you go out and speak about community, this is the community, and we're doing it through the life skills so that they do not make you look back, or themselves, or their community, or their families. And they able to do things to where now they can buy homes instead of doing home invasions, and they're picking up Tate marriages instead of guns. And I just want to say thank you for even giving us an opportunity. We're individuals that want to make the change and desire to be successful. We have an avenue for them through the skill trade, through the I B W, and it's just going to get bigger and better. We've got the Conrak coming up. We've got other things coming up around in Inglewood, and we will make a difference in this community. And I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity.
You're welcome. You know, just so you know, that all of our development agreements include goals for local hire of thirty-five percent, and we also have hard-to-hire provisions, which is a euphemism for hiring offenders that appear dead to society. And so the new Inglewood is for everyone. These young men, they're not making minimum wage. They're making prevailing wages at union scale, something that was unheard of in this city before. If you had a felony conviction, you were written off. And that's not the way Inglewood's going to be.
Electrical unions is like the cream of the crop of a lot of trades, just based on the algebra these folks need to learn to pass the exam. And I commend you for giving them those classes.
It's a skill trade, and then also, just so you know, Mayor, that not only are we doing it from the community, but we're also have, we have leadership classes to where young men and women of color from this community will be in decision-making process also, not just the labor, but also the decision-making process. Because I'm a general superintendent, I'm teaching these individuals to take my place so they can lead also and not just be part of the workforce, but also be leaders.
We thank you for your service. Item one, CSA one, and H one.
Quarant register.
Do allow payment of the bills.
Second.
Adam Clerk.
City Council, Successor Agency, and Housing Authority members. Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye. Consent counter. Items two through four.
Don't move.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. O one.
Staff report recommending adoption of an ordinance number nineteen dash zero six to adopt the 2016 California Title Twenty-four Building Code.
Motion to wait for the reading.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Dodson. You said yes?
Aye.
Aye. Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. A one.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a closed session on CS one, which is the workers' compensation claims of Stephanie Phillips-Patrick. She had five claims. There's a request for authorization to settle this matter up to forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. A two.
Thank you, Mayor. No oral reports from the city attorney's office.
CM one.
There are no oral reports from the city manager's office.
BC one.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate Sabrina Barnes and her staff for a job real done on Saturday. They did very good with the Martin Luther King event, and they do good on all their events. They have an incredible team, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. And also, I wanted to acknowledge our very own Ayesha Thompson, who did the opening at the service on Saturday with her girls, actually, and that's a passion of hers. It's a ministry of hers, and those young girls were really great. They ministered to us and did a fabulous job on Saturday. And last but not least, last week, I spoke about the voter centers, and I thanked the Inglewood residents, but I forgot to thank one other person, and that was our city treasurer, Wanda Brown. Thank you. That's the end of my remarks.
Thank you. CM one.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to...
Hold on, hold on. CM one.
Oh, you just got around.
I did. I fooled you.
Okay.
Now, the most important one. CT one.
Thank you. I too want to congratulate Sabrina Barnes for doing just an outstanding job. As I stopped and checked with her, I thought she was actually, every time I saw her, she was walking, so it was like she was really, really putting in an awful lot of work. It was just well organized. I also want to congratulate code enforcement. Excellent job they did also. And also Henry Brown for an excellent MLK program and excellent student participant, and particularly that second grader. This kid was only seven years old, and he based a principle of his speech presentation on Sir Isaac Newton's principles. I mean, I thought that was just exceptional, one of the better speeches that I've ever heard. Also, I want to congratulate this group that just came up here, Second Call, although they came in a little late. I too also have a program called A Different View to help female ex-offenders also put their lives back in order by going down and speaking to them in the Huntington Park Correctional Center. And me and a number of groups would go there and speak to the participants, the newly-released parolees, and we would offer various kinds of services, such as helping them to get their GED, helping them to get jobs placement, helping the women to get their children back, and all kinds of self-help that we were offering these newly-released parolees. And female offenders, as my last research showed me, that was actually entered the system at a higher rate than men. So, but for lesser crimes like could be prostitution or not taking care of their kids or drugs for the most part. But anyhow, I certainly want to commend that group and any other groups that's doing something to help these offenders who have been released and is looking for a second chance in life. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. There are no appointments to public boards or commissions, committees. Any person who wish to address the council on any matter, not any matter connected with city business, but not elsewhere on the agenda may do so at this time. One minute. Yeah, you are.
Can I have three minutes, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not?
Absolutely not.
Okay, then I will make it quick. Thank you, Mayor Butts, and council members, for allowing me to speak this afternoon. My name's Matt Palma. I'm a supervising electrical engineer employed by the County Sanitation Districts of Los Angeles.
You get two more minutes for that.
Oh, thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of almost a thousand fellow AFSMI employees across six bargaining units, ranging from clerical and technical support to professional accountants, scientists, and engineers. I'm here to talk to you about the ongoing labor negotiations. We're still at an impasse after twenty months of collective bargaining. The sanitation districts oversee a vast infrastructure of solid waste and wastewater operations for seventy-eight cities, including this one. Our work in science and engineering is vital to protecting both public health and the environment. Despite the excellent service we provide, our management's proposing a pay cut on our employees. It'll adversely impact workers' families during the remaining years of employment and into retirement. And to be clear, we're not asking for anything outlandish, just a reasonable cost of living adjustment to keep up with inflation and not to have our compensation cut. Our management admits there's no financial reason for this pay cut. Our budget and rate structures already account for it. Ratepayers and Orange County sanitation pay twice as much as you do. We provide excellent service. We haven't had cost of living increases in two consecutive years, and you know what's going on with the economy, three to four percent increase. So what's the big hangup? In the past, the districts agreed to pay the employees' member contributions to CalPERS in lieu of giving the employees an eight-and-a-half percent cost of living adjustment that was owed to the employees. Now, management simply wants to take that back without making the employees whole on that. Most agencies in California have already negotiated to have employees pay their pension contribution while giving them corresponding rates to ensure compensation isn't eroded. We're asking for the same thing, and you did that in your very city here in 2014. A simple swap. So what can you do? We're asking that each of you sign a letter asking sanitation district's management to immediately withdraw the unreasonable position of a pay cut and resolve the labor dispute with a fair contract for the employees. And I'd be happy to leave a sample letter with your clerk, so with copies for all of you to sign and send in. And I want to thank you for allowing me to speak again today. I urge you to take a few moments to speak with the employees that are protesting in front of the building every board meeting that you come to, and just to get a better understanding of the hard-working sanitation district's middle-class workers who are just trying to keep up with inflation. I thank you for your time and support.
You're very welcome. But you know, when we gave the corresponding rates to pay the purse contributions, we were being good guys, so, all right. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. Everybody. My name is Althea Moses. I'm an Inglewood Olympian and an entrepreneur. I want to thank Sabrina for a wonderful, wonderful, well-organized MLK celebration this weekend. I had fun being a part of it as a vendor. And I want to share with you that I have a, I'm a health and fitness, kind of guru, they call me. I have a number-one bestselling book, and I also have a fitness class at Darby Park. I want to invite the council members and everyone in the city to the fitness class at Darby Park. It's Tuesdays and Thursdays, six-thirty to seven-thirty. And that's about it. No, I have one more thing. The Second Call program, I love the idea that they're helping adults change their lives that are disadvantaged. And so I have this idea that to start an achievement, a Ready Achievers Program or Mentorship Program here in Inglewood to help those, to catch those students before they leave school. And I feel that I'm highly qualified to do it because I grew up in the bottoms here in Inglewood, and I overcame. So I really would like to, I'm considering starting a program here to help those people, to catch them, to help them before they leave school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Gwen Allen with Multicultural Urban Change Alliance, and I was at the King Day Festival on Saturday, and I came across this having to do with housing. And so I have clients who are first-time home buyers that are definitely interested in moving to the lovely city of Inglewood, and they are wondering when they can get this down payment assistance. So I've called the office several times, and I haven't got anybody to answer the phone, and the voicemails are all full, so I just want to know what I need to do.
You can go right up to the seventh floor and talk to somebody at the counter on the seventh floor in housing.
Seventh floor?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Mayor, the city council and staff, Ray Davis, Second District, I'm gonna humbly request if I go over just a little time, because I need...
Yes, we let the guy from sanitation district go over. So you're good.
I'm gonna vent a little bit because it's a happy venting, though. I came in on the tail end of the electricians, and Melanie filled me in quickly how that group of men had almost five hundred years ill time, and they got out and turned their lives around. See, that's what it's about, people. That's what the city's gonna be doing. That's gonna be our great legacy. Not only are you gonna not be left behind, we won't allow you to be left behind. You're not gonna have any excuses anymore. You just chose wrong. How it has to happen also is, I don't know if you have looked on Facebook, somebody's been streaming how a Raider football player named Marshawn Lynch is buying up everything in Oakland that's listed that he can get his hands on. And why? He says very simply, he says, this is how you prevent gentrification. If you own the dirt underneath, you got a community. So nudge, nudge, wink, wink. We have lots of people from Inglewood, and furthermore, since this is gonna be a Mecca, we should inviting everybody outside that are movers and shakers, come to Inglewood and invest. I would personally invite the president and his fetching wife to buy a house here. If she can fill up the form, buy a house, this could be their winter residence.
You talking about Obama or Trump?
Talking about Obama.
Okay, you said the president.
Trump's wife ain't filled up nothing. Well, don't answer. Don't answer that. She hasn't filled up anything, but seriously. We could ask somebody, Obama's probably gonna make half a billion dollars on book sales. One thing about Trump, and this is a fact, call me on it, Madam Treasurer, when he cut the marginal tax rate for the riches of our rich, he didn't segregate black rich people, did he? They're making the same tax cut as everyone else.
Thank you.
Now, what are we gonna do with it?
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Appreciate the political lesson.
My name is Willie A.G., and I live in the beautiful city of Inglewood, California, and I'm proud of it. I stand here as chairman of Park and Recreation in this beautiful city. I want to congratulate park director, Ms. Sabrina Barnes, the staff. The affairs that they putting on, each one of them get better and better. I'm so proud of this young lady, you know. We've had some tough fights now over the years.
Yes, you have.
But let me tell you something. I love her, and I believe she loved me, and I'm proud of what they're doing to this city. Our parks are looking beautiful. It's just, man, I don't know what to say. Just keep on doing what you're doing. Number-one city in the United States of America, and that's no joke. And look here, I don't care who come here. If he's president of the United States, he's welcome to come to the city of Inglewood.
I was just having him clarify. Every president is welcome here.
Eric Holly Chamber of Commerce. I just want to congratulate Parks and Reg Department also. Really amazing time with the MLK celebration. A lot of the businesses and people really enjoyed it being on Market Street opposed to being at the other place because it brought awareness to some of the businesses that were there, and some of the actual residents didn't realize some businesses were still there. So they enjoyed being able to shop and things like that along the way. So they encourage us to please keep it in that area as well and keep it going. Also, thank you for recognizing I B W. It's a great group of guys, and it's impressive to see men and women that have turned their lives around after spending so many years in prison, over five hundred years. It's amazing, and they're trying to give back to the communities that they've hurt. So great job to the city. Eric Halli, Chamber of Commerce. I just want to congratulate Parks and Reg Department also. Really amazing time with the MLK celebration. A lot of the businesses and people really enjoyed it being on Market Street opposed to being at the other place because it brought awareness to some of the businesses that were there, and some of the actual residents didn't realize some businesses were still there, so they enjoyed being able to shop and things like that along the way, so they encourage us to please keep it in that area as well and keep it going. Also, thank you for recognizing IBW. It's a great group of guys, and it's impressive to see men and women that have turned their lives around after spending so many years in prison, over five hundred years. It's amazing, and they're trying to give back to communities that they've hurt, so great job to the city.
With that, we'll close the public comment. Council comments. Councilman Dodson, District one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate the Rams, the LA Rams.
Of Inglewood, California.
Of Inglewood, California. Go Rams. Next, the Thirty-Sixth Annual Martin Luther King Celebration. Now, I've been to all thirty-six. I'm an original member. I gotta tell you, Sabrina Barnes and her staff, Henry Brown, and the Planning Commission Committee did a wonderful job, putting on one of the best celebrations, if not the best celebration I've ever seen. We had a master, Mr. Stere morning, Pat Harvey on Channel Two, and she did one heck of a job. We had a great grand marshal in Glenn Tarm, and his wife were also grand marshals, also with Derek Fisher and Eric Dickerson. I want to congratulate all of the winners of the speech contest. They all had great speeches, and they did them well. I introduce the second grader that, as Brown was talking about, Dr. Brown, Pete Ashford, great kid, and you know, the amazing thing about this program this year was that all the kids who were performing for Inglewood schools, that has not happened before. So Inglewood schools are doing something right, and the Heritage Music Foundation Choir, oh man, my foot start tapping when I think about it, and they also had kids from the Inglewood Theater Group. Now, you know, I didn't even know those people existed, but as I sit there and watch these kids perform, I want to know why we didn't know about them before now. We have some great things going here in Inglewood and wonderful people doing them, so if you miss the Martin Luther King Celebration this year, don't miss it next year. Now, with that, I want to ask everyone to save the date, February ninth, for my B-one annual shredding event at the I-COP Center at twenty-nine oh one Manchester Boulevard from nine to twelve. We'd be looking for you. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Councilman Dodson. Councilman Franklin says, "Don't include any police records in your shredding."
I will not.
Councilman Padilla, District two.
Hey, Ralphie. No, you know, again, just to hats off to John Harriel and IBW, they do a great job of finding careers for these young men and women to come out and be able to provide for their families, to put a roof over their head, to feed their families. So that's, that's just a wonderful thing, and here in the city of Inglewood, with everything we've got going on, it's great to be able to help provide these opportunities for these folks to work, so that's awesome. I also want to just remind folks that this Wednesday is our homeless count. It'll be downstairs in Community Room A. Eight o'clock, I think they're showing the video, and then nine o'clock, they're gonna go out and start doing the count, so that's this coming Wednesday night. Now, a week from this Wednesday night, for those of you that are interested in a career with the L.A. County Fire Department, we're gonna be putting together a recruitment seminar by Rogers Park at six P.M. That's on Wednesday night, June thirtieth. Six P.M. at Rogers Park. It's a recruitment opportunity to join the L.A. County Fire Department. I also want to thank, we had an opportunity, you know, look, we had a great MLK event here in Inglewood on Saturday. Also, I didn't realize how long that parade was, because after we got through, because we were in the front, my wife Stella and I walked around, visited the booths, and then we happened to cross back over towards Manchester, and the parade's still going. I mean, great job. I mean, all these community organizations that came out, but as we visited the booths, to see the residents that were out here that had booths such as Althea Moses and others, our cert team was out there, our emergency planning folks, the police, the fire departments, everybody was out there. Our community came together, as always, to celebrate all the good things that we have here in the city of Inglewood. And so, you know, it's an exciting time for us, some fun times are ahead, and you know, I gotta tell you, I appreciate all our staff and all the hard work that they do, and I also really appreciate our community for coming together to celebrate and to be a part of the transition that's taking place here in the city of Inglewood. So for that, thank you, and I got my Ram shirt on, so go Rams, baby. We'll see them at the Super Bowl, so thank you, everyone.
Councilman Franklin, District four.
Yes, and I really want to put up my hands and thank Skip Holleran, who kept the good fight of faith for Second Call, the founder of Second Call, and John has now worked with him collectively. Skip and I go back many years when we had the issues of trying to help individuals, help individuals that are now re-entering out of prison, but the doors are closed, and with the help of this city and even our one-stop program that we have, and now Second Call, they're giving not a handout, but a hands-up of opportunity because they expressed the will. Give me the opportunity, and I will do better, and now you see they are doing productive work, making union scale, and is in a position now that they can start having their own home and family, so hats off to them for a well-deserving job and effort, but remember, it started with them first willing. They were yielding vessels, and they had the opportunity, and they took advantage of that opportunity. I also wanted to thank you, thank you, thank you for Sabrina Barnes, her team, the police department, parking enforcement, and all the traffic controllers that handled the Martin Luther King event. Service was outstanding. I enjoyed the march. I thought for a minute I was in the Rose Parade because there was one section there with bleachers and commentators that was announcing who was coming and made some remarks. It was refreshing, and more importantly, I was very impressed to see the fact that it was the residents that actually embraced the march, and they came out of their houses, and they were standing along the parade route or march. I've never seen so many there at that time, and then having the new bleachers that we had right at Gravilla and South Side of City Hall and the library, that was just awesome. And then the collage of everyone meeting together on down Market Street, and as you heard, the Chamber of Commerce Director acknowledged that the businesses welcomed that opportunity, so they can identify, what do we really have in Inglewood? And you walk past it, but you don't stop at it, and now they had a chance to mingle, and the foods were fantastic. The lobster one, I have to tell you, did catch my attention. Couldn't miss that opportunity, but more importantly, this was a city effort and was a win-win for all, and thank you, everyone, for participating in whatever you did. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Not much left, Eloy.
No.
Eli Morales, District three.
So just to carry on the whole MLK celebration, always awesome here. I'm amazed. Thank you to staff, really. I don't know how many staff members we actually had out there to make it happen throughout the day on Saturday, but thank you for helping us do that. The one thing I'll point out about MLK that I don't know if anyone else pointed out, but I'm always amazed, I mean, ours is so connected to the history, right, with the Tuskegee Airmen, the Buffalo Soldiers, you know, we have the, the remaining members show up here, and I'm amazed that we have that, and I'm glad we highlight them every year. I'm glad that we get to take pictures with them, and that's something that we can always take with us, so I'm very proud of our MLK celebration and our parade round, our march. Just another shout-out for the Second Call, Big John, Eric Brown, I know Skip as well. The programs that exist when folks get hope, have hope where there's no hope, is amazing, and when you're a grown man and you come out of prison and somebody allows you the opportunity to prove yourself, I mean, it's amazing. Here, I was asking the folks that came out from Local Eleven, five of them live here in the city of Inglewood and work at the site here, so that goes a long way with understanding what the impact truly is when you have a development of that magnitude, so I just wanted to share that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. No, great MLK day, great kids, great grand marshals. Termins were there. I want you guys to notice whenever I have a picture, I have all of us in the picture, but but I'm gonna tell you this, that, because everything's getting greater and greater, you know. It's wonderful that the Rams are gonna be in the Super Bowl, but you know what's even more wonderful is that it just adds to the brand of the city. You know, I remember it was January fourteenth of twenty fifteen, and we were standing on the south lawn, the council and myself, and we were talking about that we were going to seek an NFL team, and I remember all the reporters from Orange County and the news stations, and they were being very condescending and smirking and so on and so forth, and what we've done since that time is that every single thing that we've set out to do, every single thing we've set out to do, has been accomplished, and the Rams were enough, but for them to be in the Super Bowl and the stadium, to be at the point that it is, it really says to the world, boy, that Inglewood is for real. All the people in the city, I guess I say all the ones that count, they've believed, they've supported, they've been there for us. All the employees really stepped up, customer service, Public Works, Lease Department. Just, I'm amazed on a daily basis at the work that's being done day to day here. We don't have any people that act like that check comes every other Friday, whether I work or not. Employees treat this like this is an adventure of service. This is from somebody that's been in the business for forty-six years, worked in Santa Monica and Los Angeles and started here. I'm gonna tell you right here and right now, employees, there's no city of residents that are better than what we have here in Inglewood. I mean, I don't know what happened. We don't even have gadflies anymore. Eloy's, Eli, I'm just telling you, it just must be depressing, but I would tell you this, I just, I'm grateful to be here at this time, working with these employees, this council, and to be here for these residents, so with that, we're adjourned.